Good evening. Excuse me, I would like to take this opportunity to welcome you to the public hearing to adopt final millage and budget meeting this Tuesday, September 18th, 2023. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The 2023 proposed required local effort millage rate represents an 8.44% increase from last year's rolled back millage rate. The total 2023 proposed millage rate represents a 10.20% increase from last year's rolled back millage rate. The operating millage is required to hire staff for the school district, pay negotiated salary and fringe benefits to staff, the cost of fuel, electricity, and other goods and services. I'd like to ask the superintendent, I believe we have a presentation from our chief financial officer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll have Bonnie Penner, our CFO, come up and do a short presentation on our budget.
Good afternoon. So, we are back to talk about the budget. The last time we spoke about the budget was on August the 1st, where we approved the tentative millage rates and the tentative budget. So, as this is aptly named, this is our final budget hearing, where we will be finalizing the millage rates and adopting the final budget. However, there is always the opportunity to amend the budget as we normally do throughout the school year. So, just wanted to quickly go over the millage rates, and then I'll talk a little bit about the budget. So, again, as we adopted in August, the same millage rates apply. The required local effort has decreased by .092 mills from 3.024 mills to 2.932 mills. And as we know, it's titled "The Required Local Effort" because we are required to levy that in order to participate in the Florida Education Finance Program. The other three pieces of our millage levy have remained the same for, I looked, 14 years. So, the voted operating referendum millage remains at 1 mill. Our discretionary operating millage is .748 mills. And then, our capital outlay millage is 1.5 mills. That gives us a total millage levy for the operation of our schools of 6.180 mills, which is just slightly down from last year. A taxpayer will see $618 bill for every $100,000 of taxable value. So, our total budget proposed for the 2324 year is just a little over $1.5 billion. This is an increase of about $332 million, which is a large increase, more so than what we normally see. The primary reason for this increase is because we've got two schools being constructed. So, you'll see that is the primary issue. We've got two schools, the K-8 at Clark and Lorraine, which we expect the bulk of the expenditures to happen during the 2324 year. And we have the full cost of the high school at Welland Park budgeted in the 2324 year. So, again, that's the total school district budget. But we often like to look at just the general fund portion of the budget, because that's where a lot of the magic happens. And our budget for 2324, the total budgeted appropriations for the general school fund is just over $603 million, which is an increase of around $36 million over where we closed out last year. The bulk of those expenditures are instruction, which is what we always want to see. We also saw some increases in operation of plant, which is where we budget for security and custodians. And if you remember during some of our budget workshops, we enhanced, definitely enhanced our security, as well as adding some additional custodians. Additionally, we see a large increase, or a larger-than-normal increase, in pupil personnel services, and that is where we reduced the allocation formula, or increased the allocation formula, for our guidance counselors. So, there are additional guidance counselors in that line item. And with that said, we still intend to close out the year with a very healthy financial position. The school board sets that we will have a financial condition ratio of 7.5%. While we look to show a decrease in our fund balance for the 2324 year, going down to 13.63%, we know we always do that during a budget year, just budgeting conservatively. However, you can see that is still a very healthy way to end the year. As well, if you look, our unaudited 2223 fund balance, the percentage went down, however, the total amount actually increased. And that's simply because it is a percentage of our revenues, and our revenues went up, therefore, that wasn't able to create as high a financial condition ratio. Again, a very healthy way to end the year, and very healthy budget for us to start this upcoming fiscal year. So, that was all I had planned to discuss today. If there are any questions, I'd be happy. And thank my two ladies here, Krista Kurtner and Cindy Stiglitz. They do all the heavy lifting, and they have done a heck of a lot of work getting this budget together. And there's a bunch that are probably back in the office listening as well, that definitely make it all happen.
Are there any comments or questions? I see none up here from a queuing standpoint, although, nope. Okay, I just saw you moving forward. I would like to thank the finance department, and obviously, the chief department officer. But I know you guys do incredible work. For those listening, or paying attention or not, but maybe listening later on, it is truly a lot of work all throughout the year, trying to wait for the legislative process to go through. It's tremendous what you guys are able to project, and as closely, when it really, you just don't know how the legislature will go about winning the funding. So, my hat's off to you. And I know that while there are a variety of different decisions upon the board, the conservative nature in which you guys go about to advise us is tremendous, and I genuinely appreciate all the work that all of you do to guide us. Thank you very much. Mr. Edwards.
Thank you. I don't have a question, but I just want to thank you. I know it was a very stressful budget process through the interim, and all of the workshops and conversations, and then getting a new superintendent who had to have a final blush on the whole thing. So, I appreciate all of the good work, and the percentages still look good. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Thank you very much. If there are no additional comments, Mrs. Rose?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to commend you, Mrs. Penner, and your department, and my colleagues on the board for maintaining a very healthy fund balance. It's something for all of us to be very proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no additional comments, we'll be moving on to item number two, which is the public hearing regarding final millage rates and budget for the 2023-2024 fiscal year. This will allow the members of the public to speak. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. When the timer flashes yellow, one minute remains, and you'll need to begin to summarize. Please stop speaking when the buzzer rings. Please note, respect for divergent viewpoints and civility will be shown at every board meeting. Whether you agree or disagree with the speaker, please listen politely, respectfully, and without making any sounds of approval or disapproval, including clapping. We have two speakers today. I will call up Sebastian Gersell, and then after that is Ken Eldredge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board member Superintendent Connor, I'm Sebastian Gersell, Jr., at Ruby High School. I've already spoken twice in opposition to the proposed budget, because, as I've continued to say, it does not have the students primarily in mind. And after the suspension of the strategic plan, that's kind of been confirmed by this board as well, that there are obviously concerns with where some of the money is going. But today, I'd like to just share with you some insight regarding the budget, from the point of view of someone that actually goes to the schools every single day. The issue with the budget is not necessarily in the summary of the appropriations, rather, it is within the distribution of the tax dollars in those general line items where we find trouble. We must remember, our district's problems do not stem from a lack of resources or money, rather, a lack of competency at times. One example of this is what I call the SCS Cycle of Problems and Money. It features our district's chronic practice of failing to solve a problem, blaming the lack of resources, ignoring the evidence, and then allocating more resources, and the cycle continues. Now, I'm happy to email you this, but this is what that looks like. It's a cycle, where we have an issue, we put money towards it, the evidence shows it doesn't achieve anything, but we keep asking for more money. And one example of this is a mental health issue. The district is having a hard time, so they said, "We don't have the resources for this." So, they hired Jafar Godfrey of Digital University. Well, the evidence showed that his program didn't do much for our district, and so they're back to allocating more resources. They want more money again. Well, this cost us $37,000. It's gone, and it achieved nothing, despite the evidence being there. So, once the budget is passed, let's stop the cycle by auditing every line item, let's do a comprehensive analysis of what we're actually putting money towards, especially the over $400 million instructional unit, and let's implement a policy, or something similar, to what I sent to all board members yesterday, that would ensure that any further contracts that this county signs on to and spends the people's money is held accountable to the elected board members. The future should be transparent and accountable. That's what Sarasota and their money deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Ken Eldredge.
I've lived in Florida for 15 years of my life, and this year, my school taxes are going up, obviously. I think about what tangible return do I get, what kind of return on my investment. My extended family has extensive history with the public schools. My wife and I both attended public school, K-12. I went to a state university for my bachelor's degree. My mother, my sister, my father-in-law, all were career public school teachers. All of them would not work in the current atmosphere in the public schools. The public schools have a public relations problem. We need to do something to build credibility. I asked a neighbor recently, "Where do you plan to send your kindergartner next year?" First words out of his mouth, "He's not going to public school, I know that." I said, "Why is that?" He said, "I don't want all that LGBTQ and diversity things crammed down his throat. I don't want him there." He doesn't seem to be an extremist in any way, I can tell you. There are many people who share that view. There's an education problem. Many of our graduating seniors cannot write coherently. I wonder how many high school seniors can tell us the three branches of the federal government, let alone explain the whole idea of the separation of powers and how that helped make it work? We don't have any statistics on that, but would you be willing to bet your salary this year on anything greater than 40%? I doubt it. We have a cultural problem. Healthy marriages, families, and morality are the solution to what's going on in the public schools, but schools are actively discounting them and undermining morals, families, and marriages. There is no hope or future for a city, country, or a culture, where 90% of its young people are indoctrinated in an educational system that is atheistic, homo-normative, and anti-nuclear family. The Declaration of Independence clearly says that all men are created equal, that we're endowed by our Creator with certain inalienable rights. We are not allowed to teach that there is a Creator in the public schools. Three questions. If there is no Creator, where do our rights come from? They don't come from a Creator. They come from society, from mankind. If there is no Creator, then what is the highest authority we have for our young people? Third, if there is no God, there is no image of God in man. And historically, what has prompted cultures to protect the vulnerable, the very weak, the very old, the very young, those with dementia, those with Down Syndrome, whatever it might be, is because the image of God gives them dignity. We remove God, we remove the image of God. I'm not talking about teaching religion or denominations, but morality. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comment. Moving on to the next item of business is the item number three, adoption of the 2023 final millage rates. Is there a motion?
I move for adoption of the 2023 millage rates as proposed.
And just for the record, they should be read aloud. I'm happy to read that, just to note, prior to the second. The following 2023 millage rates be adopted as presented, the required local effort 2.932 mills, discretionary operating .748 mills, capital 1.5 mills, voted operating 1.00 mills, total millage 6.180 mills. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Are there any comments? Seeing none, members, please vote. I believe we're using the computer today? Let's see if it works. If not, we'll do a voice. Oh, mine worked. Everyone up? Refresh. Mrs. Rose? And the motion to approve the 2023 millage rates as presented passes unanimously. Moving on to item number four, adoption of the 2023 final budget. Is there a motion?
I move for adoption of the 2023-24 budget as proposed.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments? I just have a couple then, since I try to wait. I first want, again, to thank the finance department. As noted, and Mr. Edwards, I'm glad you brought that up, there has been a lot of discussion as a board about where to allocate funds. There may be, but again, it's always a constant evaluation when we wait for Tallahassee to finalize their budget, but also with the changeover of leadership. I want to thank the superintendent. In this process, it should be reminded that he came in right as a budget was to be advertised, which is a highly unique time. And I do believe that, as one board member, there have been changes that I think that, at least the feedback I know I provided, I know other board members provided, and then also taking in the fact of what has transpired legislatively to ensure we are in the right posture from a compliance standpoint, but also, a lot of changes to the organizational structure, which I applaud you for, because as the leader of this organization, I think it's important to set things up in the manner where you believe you can achieve the goals that we and the community do expect for our students. We have a lot of conversations coming up in the next couple workshops, where we'll narrow down, or get more granular, as far as those particular goals, but again, in a very short amount of time, my hat is off to you. The other part I want to highlight, and this is, I really want to say, this is kind of a frustrating place, I think, for a lot of board members to be in. I'm only going to speak to myself personally, but I know there's been a lot of discussion about the mental health component. There's a lot of words that are used, whether it be resiliency, there are a lot of concerns. I share them personally, when it comes to how important mental health is in providing supports inside of the public education institution, in partnership with our families. However, I do believe that over some time, there have been, and again, I do not believe it, a lot of times, it's driven by the school board at all, or the school district staff, but there are different initiatives that come through, through the state, that I do not believe benefit our families and students in the way in which they're illustrated to be. I think that, when we had this conversation last time, I know there have been some changes. I will say, the conversations I've had with the superintendent, I believe 100% that he is listening, he is affording and trying to seek out the ways where we can serve all of our families and students who genuinely need the supports and services, but is also keenly aware of the concerns, and so that it's not being co-opted for ulterior motives. But I also feel that there's some work that needs to be done, not so much necessarily in these chambers, but as much as it does at the state level and a Department of Education. For that reason only, I'm not supporting this budget, but it truly does not necessarily rest on the decisions, I believe, that are made here, but because there are things that I believe are funded, that are required at the state level, of which I am committed to working through. I've already had conversations, but I just want to make sure that what our money is being utilized, and how important mental health is to this entire community, to the success and support of our students, that it not be, again, used for any reason other than a genuine purpose to support our students and families. I think we have a lot of unraveling to do at the state level. I hope that we can continue to partner with our Department of Education and the state, and that they're listening, that we're coming forward in good faith effort, but for those reasons, I'm not supporting it, but looking very forward to finding meaningful solutions in a simply, easily-to-understand-and-transparent manner. Are there any additional comments? Mr. Edwards.
I appreciate your comments. I think that one of the things that is important for all of us to remember is that, I believe, because of the climate that has happened within public education over the last multiple years, that the scrutiny by which programs are evaluated has been heightened, because no one wants to be dinged. And as the climate has tightened, I would caution rhetoric that says that programming can be brought in for ulterior motives. That concerns me. I have not, in the tenure that I've been here, seen anything other than our team. I can't speak for across the state, nor do I look beyond our county, but I can tell you from our team, the new superintendent, I have not run into a program or an issue that was anything but in the best interest of our students and our families. So, because of that, I personally, as a school board member, am very supportive of this budget.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments? Mrs. Rose?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be supporting the budget. I want to see our district go forward with the pieces that Superintendent Connor has put in place, which is an increased focus on academic excellence, and I'm very confident that if we have any pieces that surface that aren't in compliance with all of the new legislation, that it will be immediately corrected. I do appreciate this board's focus on academic achievement, and particularly, the reading and all the dialogue that we've had with that. So, I look forward to where we're going with achievement with 100% of our students. We look right now at our current data for the last several years, and roughly 30% of our students could not read at grade level. And as a board, we are accountable for that, and I feel like we are on a very positive trajectory with the reorganization that Superintendent Connor has implemented, and the accountability pieces that have been put on all departments, and on all the leaders, and most importantly, the support that's being given to teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Marinelli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to support this budget, because I know that to not support it would send a very strong message to our teachers and our parents. If I have a problem, and I do, from some of the things that are coming down from the state, I'm not going to have our district pay the price for some of the things that come down. As the only person on this board who's been a school counselor for the majority of my career, I know what some of these programs do, and I know what the unintentional consequences are of these programs. The school district is being, and it has been for many, many years, taking over many things that the family and the community has done. And it's not something that we've brought on ourselves, it's been mandated. So, I am in full support of this budget, but I do it with caution, because I don't agree, and I know that there are things that are still coming down, that are going to require a tremendous amount of work on our school counselors, our teachers, that have to do with the mental health piece. But I'm also very, very aware and empathetic and sympathetic to anybody that has mental health issues. But is the school district always the place for it? And I'm not being political, but I do have to disagree with one statement that my colleague, Mr. Edwards, said. There have been things that have come in to this school district that really have no point. But I am supporting this budget, because I am going to work with our legislatures, and ultimately, with our superintendent, Mr. Connor, to try to make sure that we keep the focus that we are supposed to, and that is on academics and student achievement, with the caring piece of a child and their emotional well-being. I can't think of anybody that would not want that for their child. But we need to work with the parents, and guide the parents to the community for a lot of these services. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Enos?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, also to the board. I mean, this is something that we've gone through, and looking at being fiscally accountable for everything that we've done. These are the things, are the measures we've brought forward. One of the things that I'd like to thank Ms. Penner, and Krista, and everybody else in that section, in that operating piece, is that obviously, when you look to the superintendent and accountability, is that it can be amended at any time. So, if we see something that we need to transfer money because of an issue that may arise, or a program, or something that we see, the betterment of the community, our teachers, our staff, our students, then that's something that I know that we can still do, even though with the adoption, which I'll be supporting of this, is the adoption of the budget statutorily, as well as that if we do see something, and the superintendent sees something, to put us, as Ms. Rose, and we all are committed to academic achievement and changing our third grade scores as we go forward, as rest of everything else, is that we do have the opportunity that we can readdress it, and we can amend the budget in order to move forward with it. So, with that, again, I would thank everybody, and we've done, as requested, and again, with the staff, they've done an exceptional job.
Thank you. Mrs. Rose?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to add one piece, a public comment that was brought up, looking at line items and expenditures, and the return on that. I'm very confident that Superintendent Connor is putting those pieces in place, so that we aren't using taxpayer we aren't using taxpayer dollars for academic programs or the like that aren't having the impact that all of us want on students. So, thank you for that input.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you. I will tell you, I have apologized from this seat. I've made mistakes from this seat, and hopefully, if that were to happen again, I will rise to that occasion. And in order to keep the conversation as collegial as I possibly can on this momentous occasion, I would love Mrs. Marinelli to write a list of programs that are pointless, turn them over to the superintendent, and allow the board to have an awareness that Mrs. Marinelli may have that the rest of us do not. So, I'm hoping that we could have a continuous improvement conversation for the best interests of our students and our families.
Thank you. I'll just close with, I will say that I've seen us focus on a tremendous, in a tremendously successful way, on areas that we do believe will improve academic achievement. There may be varying areas where we'll support certain things and not, but that does not diminish our alignment on our academic success for our students. And again, it is a unique time in education, but I believe genuinely in my heart that everyone up here is steadfast on our commitment collectively for academic achievement. If there are no additional comments, we stand with an outstanding vote, so if you haven't voted already, please do so. And the motion to approve the 2023 budget passes 4 to 1. And I close my book, and I keep doing that, so I forget what the final statements are for the evening. My apologies. Are there any additional comments? If I see none, we will be meeting tomorrow for a workshop at 1:00, and with a scheduled board meeting at 6:00.
6:30.
6:30, Pardent Meet in Venice. Thank you. I didn't have that in my notes, so thank you very much. If there are no additional comments, we stand adjourned.